I pledge in the United States of America and to the Republic where rich stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Senator, please take your role.
Yeah, open the members.
Here.
Councilmember Isaacson. Councilmember Shaffer.
Here.
Member Jen McHenry, here. Councilmember Mercer.
Here.
Councilmember Supple.
Here.
Councilmember Mattlin.
Here.
Councilmember Lovett.
Thank you. We have a quorum. And since it's a special meeting, we cannot have additions or corrections to the agenda. So with that, we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda. So moved. Been moved in second to approve this evening's agenda. All those in favor, please say hi. Hi. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we do have comments from the audience this evening. We have one person who advised us that they will be online, I believe. And he's waiting, so our clerk will be promoting him to panelists in just a moment. And so if you can hold on just a second, that would be great. Our clerk's working on getting us up on Facebook Live right now. All right. Can you have him promoted? Excellent. Thank you, Sherri. Mr. Brown, you may unmute yourself and if you can provide your name and information, you'll have three minutes to speak.
All right, great. Can you guys hear me? Just to make sure?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, awesome. Well, yeah, my name is Clayton Brown, and I currently live in Seattle, but I am, as of June 2021, I am the owner of the Deval Market Shopping Center that's right in the downtown area. And obviously, in the past, it's been a tremendous eyesore, and we've been kind of fixing it up and doing our thing with it. And we continue to make improvements, and we have some other stuff we're going to be doing that we're finishing up in the spring, so it should be done by then. The reason why I wanted to kind of come on, and I sent a couple emails out to the city council, so I think they kind of noticed some of the high-level points, but I wanted to bring up the current food truck policy that is currently, I guess, live with the city of Deval. Obviously, if you look at surrounding cities, Monroe, Redmond, Woodinville, they all allow kind of a select amount of food trucks. And I think kind of, you know, just updating the food truck policy would be beneficial to the entire community. I think last time when it was voted on, the reason why it was kind of limited to temporary permits of two or three days was just because they didn't want food trucks, or the city council at the time didn't want food trucks competing with the brick-and-mortar businesses. And back, you know, in the past, before Deval seen a pretty significant amount of population growth and new housing with over 800 homes being built. I think that made sense back then, but I think with all the people that are now living in Deval and more coming in droves, I think having a food truck policy would be great for just offering more, you know, consumer food options for residents. Obviously, you guys can tax food for sales tax, and that'll be a direct benefit to the city's budget. And then also just having more food options for, you know, local residents. A lot of people that I've talked to in Deval sometimes head out of town. I'm sure a lot of you do as well for just expanded food options. Maybe go up to Monroe or over to Redmond or Woodinville just to get food. So I think my property personally would be a great fit for a food truck. As you guys all know, kind of where it is, and I've got a bigger parking lot. So that's why I wanted to come on and talk today to kind of open up some dialogue about the current policy and maybe revisiting it now that Deval has changed and maybe grown up a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Clerk, do we have any other folks online?
We do not.
All right. And we did not receive any emails.
No, we did not.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? So moved.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to scheduled items. First up is the mayor's report. Last week, we had the Association of Washington Cities Board meeting, and in that, we approved the annual budget for the year, which includes dues for all of the cities. The night before the meeting, we had the opportunity, as the Association of Washington Cities Executive Board, to have dinner with the Washington State Association of Counties Executive Board. Our mutual lobbyists have had great working relationships over the years, and we're looking to expand that collaboration between the two organizations moving into this long legislative session. Great to meet them, votes from all over the state, especially one of the commissioners from Spokane County, who happens to be coming in as WSA president the year that Spokane Councilmember Betsy Woltersen will be Association Washington Cities President. So we kind of have fun here next year for both the organizations. Tomorrow, we have the pandemic governor's pandemic after-action review task force. We'll be making some solid recommendations for what will end up becoming the final report to the legislature on the COVID-19 pandemic and what worked well, what didn't, and what the state needs to plan for for future. And with that, that concludes my report. And so I'll move on to oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I've got two letters to read into the record, so I apologize. Thank you, City Administrator McNabb. We received two letters from constituents in relation to the snowstorms and our city's response to them. So it really goes to show how great our staff is. And so I'd like to go ahead and read those into the record for council as well as to share with the community. The first one, dear madam, sir, ladies, and gentlemen at City Hall, I'm writing on behalf on behalf and on behalf of my daughter to express her enormous and most sincere gratitude to Mr. Mike Fisher, Superintendent Inspector with your Public Works Department for his kindness and the invaluable assistance he provided us in our predicament on Tuesday morning, November 29. On that morning, we were taking my grandchildren to Braithburn Academy. Our vehicle was obviously not the best one to drive in snow and ice, so we got stuck in the snow going uphill on Kennedy Drive. We were lucky because Mr. Fisher observed our snow predicament and came to our rescue. He helped me get out of the most unpleasant situation and advised me on which alternative route to take to get to the school. He stayed with us and even came to Braithburn Academy to check that we were okay. He went above and beyond to assist us in a difficult situation. Words, words, they all mean to express how truly grateful we are to Mr. Fisher. He is a true gentleman and has a huge heart. Please extend our most sincere appreciation for his help. Accommodation is in order. I am sure he is a superintendent who leads by example and inspiration. His kindness and generosity give meaning to notions such as humanness, compassion, and mutual aid. We will never forget Mr. Fisher's attitude and his act of kindness. A huge thank you, best regards and best wishes. Happy holidays. And the next one is we received on the 12th of December. And here we go. Dear Mayor Oberlander, we live outside the city limits of Duval along the toll pipe line. Last week during the heavy snowfall, lines came down pulling our customer-owned power pole to the ground. It barely missed the truck and did some damage to the house. However, the biggest issue was that we suddenly, in the middle of the night, no longer had any power with 23 degrees outside. We are 100% electric. The pole was there when the house was purchased. We had no idea what a customer-owned pole meant. The next two days, we were unsuccessful in finding any helpful information. We both are in our 80s and disabled. With 16 inches of snow, we couldn't go anywhere. All our phoning and emailing got messages similar to, sorry, can't help you. PSC would not be able to place a new pole, and private contractors said they could not, or it would be maybe in March. The insurance company would not help with the pole replacement, and it would be a while before someone could come to assess the house too much. Then I decided to email your emergency services department and see if they had any suggestion. Within an hour, Stephen Lewsheski wrote back saying he was limited because we didn't live in the city, but he would ask around. Our first bright light. Well, I'm not sure what he did, who he contacted, but that very evening, we received a phone call from our angel at PSC. She used Stephen's name and said PSC would, after all, be installing a new pole that evening or early the next morning, and at no cost to us. Then Saturday morning, I got a call from Duval Fire Department, the Cherry Valley location, saying an anonymous person wanted them to check on us. A couple hours later, they showed up on our doorstep with three propane canisters for our little heater and two hot cooked chickens courtesy of Duval Police. It was the first warm food we had eaten in days, and we tucked in stepped into that chicken before the fire truck was even out of our driveway. Since then, an electrical contractor came to do his hookup work, and PSC returned to reconnect the basics to our house. More work needs to be done, but warmer weather and melting snow will be important for that phase. We are overwhelmed, humbled, and deeply grateful for the amazing caring response of your city departments. You should know you have some top-quality personnel working for you, and thank you does not seem to be enough. If you have a way to give these men an added weight, please do so. In all honesty, we believe they were instrumental in helping save our lives. So some pretty powerful words from community members, and it traps from what I see from our team every single day. And I want to thank the police department and Director Lewsheski, as well as Mr. Fisher for helping out our community members in need. It's really special, and it really epitomizes the small-town feel of Duval and the sense of community that everyone that lives in Washington grows. So thank you. And now we'll move on to the police department report with Chief Dubak.
Thank you for those kind words, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, and members of the community. I'm Chief Dubak with the Duval Police Department, and I'll be providing you with the Police Department Staff Report for November 2022. We will have a new lateral candidate starting on January 3rd. His name is Clement Medea. He comes to us from Hawaii Honolulu PD. And a second lateral candidate who'll be completing her background process this week. In January, we'll be promoting an officer to sergeant, and this would open up another officer position within patrol, and we have oral board scheduled for tomorrow morning to hopefully fill the spot. If all goes well, we will only have the .5 recruit position left to fill after this round. In November, we updated our personal appearance standards and allowed for beards and visible tattoos. We feel these changes will increase our equality and recruiting efforts that we've been suffering last year, ensuring our agency is inclusive and further our goal of hiring officers who will reflect the community that we serve. In November, we worked diligently to meet the Attorney General's December 1st deadline for updating our use-of-force policy to be consistent with theirs. It was a long and tedious work, and thank you to C.A. McNabb for helping out with that. But we were able to get to meet the deadline. The policy changes were forwarded to our staff for acknowledgement and review. As you're aware, last month, and like the mayor previously said, we experienced some winter snowstorms. Our patrol staff was busy helping the community any way we could. We responded to several traffic-related incidents as well as fallen trees. We would like to thank the Public Works Department for their help. Without their assistance, it would have made our job a lot more difficult. So thank you very much. In the month of November, we responded to 322 calls for service, and this is an increase from 2021 when we responded 214. Community outreach update. During the month of November, officers grew beards in support of men's health. And to raise money for the Seattle Cancer Care Alliance, we ended up raising a total of $506. And we'd like to thank everyone who donated their generosity in supporting our efforts to cure cancer and improving the lives of those who are affected. On December 2nd, the police department participated in Light Up Duval event. It was a huge success to be back in person and celebrating the holiday season with everybody. So thank you for everyone who participated in that event, made it a huge success. On December 3rd, we participated in the Hometown Harvest at the Duval Safeway. We raised over $1,200 supporting the Snoqualmie Valley Food Bank. On December 11th, we partnered with the Redemption Church and Fire District 45 and assisting Empowered Youth Network to deliver gifts to 16 needy families here in Duval. And on December 16th, officers will be participating in the Shop with a Cop event at the Walmart in Monroe. This is an annual event that fosters positive relationships between law enforcement officers and the youth. And we're excited and proud to be a part of it. I've added the police stats for November 2022 and the minutes from our public safety meeting last month in your packets for your convenience and review. And are there any questions?
And Councilmember Shaffer.
Yeah, no questions. I'm just, you know, so pleased that we have such a positive report in so many ways. I actually did have one question. Any reason that you can figure out, we've had so many additional calls this month compared to last year?
It's a couple of different things. We have a lot of new staff members that are still, you know, getting their, you know, feet wet in law enforcement and getting, you know, experience out there in streets. We have an increase in our traffic stops and that, those types of activities, but nothing like major crimes or anything to report.
Okay.
It's like the newer officers, you know, just getting out there and making contacts with citizens and doing their thing.
Great, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or feedback for Chief Dubak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council committee reports. I'm assuming committees did not meet, but I'll double check. Looks like we didn't. And moving on to other council reports. Did anyone have any events or activities that they'd like to share with the group? Seeing none, we'll move on to special presentations. The first one is National Mentoring Month Proclamation. Now go ahead and read it into the record. Whereas January 2022, we'll mark the 20th, or it should be, sorry, 2023, will mark the 20th anniversary of National Mentoring, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to help ensure positive outcomes for young people. Whereas, City of Duval honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas, mentoring programs like Youth Success, mentoring a program of Empowered Youth Network makes our communities and our state stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks. And whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue. And whereas, mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people, and drives positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas, quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth of a young person and their relationships with other adults. And whereas, students who regularly meet with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school. And youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas, youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs and 27% less likely to start drinking. And whereas, National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in the city of Duval. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, Washington, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as National Mentoring Month in the city of Duval. And we have one more proclamation. It's the Trees City USA Proclamation, which we do every year. Whereas, in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Amy Oberlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, Washington, do hereby proclaim December 31st as Arbor Day in the city of Duval. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you. And now we will move on to unfinished business. Agenda Bill 22-96, Preliminary Biennial Operating and Capital Budget for 2023 and 2024, for discussion and final decision. And I'll turn it over to our city administrator Cynthia McNabb and Dana Mason, our finance director.
Good evening, council, mayor, city staff, ladies and gentlemen, McNabb, city administrator, with the city of Duval. And what I have for presentation today was provided in the council packet in Exhibits A and B to the AV 2296 Preliminary Biennial Biennial Operating and Capital Budget for 2023 and 2024. And what I'm hoping to do today is kind of walk through those exhibits and proceed through a process of taking votes on the budget notes and the budget amendment, and then come back to the budget ordinance for for consideration and vote. So clerk or finance director Mason, if we can pull up Exhibit A.
Do you have that, Dana, or I can do it.
Yep. Everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, this is Exhibit B. There we go. Exhibit A.
You can't see it.
There it is. Okay. So the exhibit, the information exhibit A and in Exhibit B are budget notes and budget amendment items that were brought forward last council meeting for consideration and vote. So they've been proposed here so that we can work through a process of discussion, deliberation, and then voting. The first, which is included here as Exhibit A, a budget note, was an idea presented last meeting on use of tree mitigation funds to be put as a budget note to council in 2023 and added as amended by any budget adjustment. And so for the purposes of tonight, I'd ask the mayor to ask council if there's any further discussion on the budget note for tree mitigation funds.
Is there any further discussion on this budget note from council? Seeing none, we'll take that as consensus and move on to the next one. Councilmember Mattlin.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if now was a time to request that potentially we add an additional budget note, or if you would rather go over everything first.
I guess I would ask Councilmember Mattlin, is the we can ask for additional amendments or budget notes? Is it related to any of the budget action items in Exhibit B?
Well, what it has to do with is something that was agreed to at the last meeting, and I just wanted to document that agreement. So it's not anything new. It's just requesting that a budget note memorialized what had been agreed to.
Okay, I think now is the time to bring this forward.
Okay, thank you. It was, I had asked a question at the, I think it was just the very last meeting about the new positions that, since they're brand-new, that council would be given the opportunity to review the job descriptions before the position is recruited. And I believe it was agreed to that that would occur. And so I thought, you know, just for the sake of documenting agreements, it would be nice to have that put in the budget note.
I recall from that meeting that administration made it clear that council would receive those job descriptions, and a budget amendment was not formally requested by council.
Um, well, it wasn't that it wasn't requested, it was just that I mean, I'm requesting it now. I'm confused. Are you saying that I'm not allowed to request?
No, no, what I'm saying is that council, we have the discussion at council. A budget note was not requested, and there was consensus from council that administration bringing forward those descriptions when they're finalized was fine.
Yeah.
Unless, but that's not a budget note. That's just a discussion. So if you'd like to make a formal budget note, you'll need to propose that.
Yes, that is what I am proposing. Is it just memorialize that prior to the positions, the new positions being recruited, that council would be provided the job descriptions with an opportunity to provide feedback if needed?
Mayor Lieutenant McHenry. Since it's something that administration and it sounded like council agreed upon at the time, and I don't think budget notes take enough sort of amount of time to add, I would be fine with documenting that in the budget.
Councilmember Isaacson.
So is council going to see job descriptions before?
That's what we already agreed to prior to this budget note proposal.
So what's, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mattlin, what's the note accomplish?
Well, currently, before any changes are made to a position, it needs to be provided to, or excuse me, if a change is made, it needs to be provided to council. And since these are brand-new positions that we've never even seen the job description for, and my understanding it hasn't even been created, that it's sort of a special circumstance that we should be provided it because it's a new position. So in effect, it's a change from no position to a new position. So following our procedure, it seems logical to do that. But since it hasn't been called out specifically, it seems like it maybe should be mentioned as I'm requesting and had been agreed to. It's, these positions are, and I explained it at the last council meeting, that by state law, it is the responsibility of the council to set the job duties and pay and all of those different things. And because we are funding, we are approving a budget for these positions, so we need to be sure exactly what we're investing taxpayer money for. Don't expect any controversy over it. It's really a process.
City Administrator McNabb and then Councilmember Isaacson.
I believe that meeting minute notes from last meeting more reflect the request to me that I bring for transparency purposes, the final job descriptions to council for review, and I stated that I would do so. So that's already reflected in notes. The other item that I want to address is the difference between purposes of council authority to approve the compensation and benefits of a position which have vegetarian impacts versus directing and identifying individual job duties of just positions within the city. That falls to the mayor and to city administration in prioritizing that work. So there are clear boundaries about what is council role and what is city administration role and mayor's role in how jobs are developed, funded, and prioritized within the city.
And Councilmembers Isaacson.
Yeah, so I think, Mayor, that's my question. The way I see it is the city decides what the roles are.
Correct.
Council is going to approve those roles and be associated with it. And when we approve the budget tonight, those positions are already accounted for in the budget, if approved tonight.
Correct.
What what I think Councilmember Mattlin is asking for, and what I understand from last week, was that we are going to see those descriptions, and we are going to review them and approve them still. It's just, the budget is not approved, you know. What Councilmember Mattlin asked for was that we would see them before we go out on the street, and we all knew that.
Yep.
So that's still going to happen. The funding is planning. That's what we're talking about.
Correct.
Right?
Yep, absolutely.
So maybe educated me, but I understand the note, trying to figure out the note accomplishments.
Accomplished, there's nothing outside of what's already been accomplished, other than memorializing it in the budget.
Very.
And often, you know, council's welcome to do that, but it seems like
It's a budget, right?
It's, the positions and salaries are already in the budget. The only thing that's not completed is the job descriptions and formal approval through the budget process. And as reference, every time we, for example, even this last time when we went through hiring new positions this year, council saw those job announcements, I believe, even before they went out. And so this is, feels like overkill for something that's routine.
Yeah, more of an education question, if I understand the note accomplishes. I don't want to undermine what Councilmember Mattlin is asking for, but also give the process education of me and Elvis Hurst, who understand we are and see the job descriptions, and I have a goal on the budget dispossessment. Not the actual job.
What council members, council member Natalie is asking for is a budget note. Or committing to something that we've already committed to, um, to bring back to council and adding additional language to the budget.
Okay.
Any other counsel feedback?
I have my hand raised, I don't know if you can see.
Hold on just a minute, council member Natalie. Um, so council, um, if we don't have any additional feedback, um, and this includes council member Natalie. Um, I'll let council member Natalie speak one more time. But if there's not, um, if council does not say, yes, we want this budget amendment. Then it's consensus that it does not move forward unless at least three people say that they want it in the budget. Um, and then we need language for tonight as well. Council member Natalie.
Okay, I just wanna, I wanna say that it's pretty common that we add budget notes to document agreements made during the budget process. Because it's really hard and we've lost track of these type of things in the past. And so learning from experience, I think it's helpful for everyone to document when those agreements are made. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, I had quoted the last time I just, when I brought this up. That MRSC identified job description as being a responsibility of the legislative branch, which is what city council is. And so if for some reason MRSC is incorrect in their interpretation, then I. Um, would potentially like to understand that because that is um, what uh, MRSC identifies. As a legislative uh, duty. So anyway, I just wanted to make that comment.
Great, thank you. Um, Mr. Kenny, do you have anything to add to this?
I'm just.
Um, cause I.
I'm gonna be talking about single advice from MRSC versus our own city attorney. And, and can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, well, I'm, I'm gonna be totally honest with everyone here, I'm a little bit confused. I feel like we're all in consensus that the job descriptions will come back to council. Um, and so I don't think there's a dispute that that is coming back to council. Um, and so the, I guess the only thing that I'm hearing is whether or not it gets documented into the budget or not. It has already been documented into the minutes as the city administrator noted. Um, so i- if that, if that is the only question on whether or not it can or should go in the budget. Um, I would answer that and say that it can go in the budget, it doesn't need to go in the budget. And so I think frankly, council should just decide whether or not the city administrator noting that it will happen. Is sufficient for council, or if you are going to require it to be written into the budget and then vote on that. But I'm not seeing a dispute beyond that, I'm a little confused.
Um, I think part of the question, uh, city attorney Kenny is. Uh, the statement that city council has basically essentially full authority over our job descriptions. Um, and that's not been, um, we haven't had that discussion in council with our attorney. And so that's part of the question here. Uh, that ties into uh, the need for a budget note or not. And so that's what I was questioning and we're not prepared to answer it, that's just fine.
No, no, I mean, so, so council does approve job descriptions. We've taken job descriptions to council in the past, the day-to-day administration of staff. And a whole slew of things beyond that would be outside of the purview of council.
Thank you. Uh, council member Shaker.
Yeah, th- thank you, yeah, and I, I, I agree with Daniel. I take, I think we're all saying the same, same thing. I don't think there's a dispute here. Uh, it's whether it gets recorded in the budget note or not. Uh, frankly, I don't see any harm in putting a budget note in. Uh, even though we were gonna do it anyway, even it's been documented already in the notes. Uh, I say we just put it in budget note and move on.
Um, is that consensus of councils, what I'm trying to get at? Council member Sefol.
I don't, I don't really understand the need for documenting some complaints. I mean, it just leads to confusion eventually, I think.
Um, councilor Isaacson and then Mercer.
I don't understand what work it is doing, who's gonna do it?
We have to do it in the meeting now for approving the budget today.
Yeah, how much, how much work is that? I don't want to produce a thing that seems simple when we sit here.
There you go, I would have to take us side by and figure out how to write it up.
Okay.
Um, council member Mercer.
I, I think that's where I'm on the fence. Um, if it's, and just to confirm, I think, um, city administrator. You know, indicated it's, it's recorded in the minutes. So in terms of from a sort of a place to refer back to in terms of the chairman, I'm, I'm, I'm safe there. I have no problems about adding it, other than I was really hoping that we would pass the budget this evening. And if this puts that decision in danger, then I would not be in favor of adding the budget.
Mayor president McCannery. Um, since council member Natalie brought this um, potential budget note up. I was wondering if there was any pre-written um, drafts sent to the city administrator that could speed things up.
Um, it was brought up to the city administrator uh, this afternoon. So, uh, council had been requested to have budget council amendments in, so the administration.
But we did not talk about language because this budget note had not been presented to council last week. Um, it's my position that I bring all new matters or, uh, that new matters. Need to be brought to council instead of worked on individually between me and my council member. Um, so we have not looked at language or anything like that.
Um, just, all I wanted to say is, you know, honestly, one way or another, I thi- I think this whole conversation's a bit of overkill. Um, but you know, for example, our one budget note we have here is like a single sentence. So I, I think it would take a few minutes, I don't think it'd be that big a deal. I, the sooner we just decide yes or no on a budget note, let's move on, that's my opinion. But I'm quite putting it in as well, because it's what we've done before.
Yep.
So we, we've heard from uh, council member Shaker, um, council member Natalie and council member McCannery. And now, we have, I'm not firm yet, I need her to, council member Isaacson.
Yes, and as I said, something that can be done with a sentence. And that's what it's gonna take and just means doing the sideboard of that language, I, I would be fine. As I said, if it requires going back and, and potentially pushing the discussion up and, and decision until the twentieth. And I would be against it, so it's more procedural.
So we'll take a recess, uh, take a four-minute recess so somebody, our, our city administrator can formulate a budget now.
Okay.
Finance Director Mason, if you could stop sharing so I can share my screen.
Okay, let me zoom in just so that I can see. Can you see that a little bit further?
Looks good.
That looks great to me.
Looks great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Great, so there's consensus on this budget note, which we'll probably need to add an amendment, correct?
So typically, once a final budget is adopted, there is a little bit of work on including any amendments or budget notes within the five day period after a budget is adopted to then most of the public.
Okay, so we would just include that at this time. Thank you. All right, we can move on. Okay, Finance Director Mason, can you bring back up the budget action items?
Okay, so the next, this is Exhibit B to the to the biennial, proposed biennial budget for Plan 3 and 24. So the budget action items are the amendment discussions that occurred in the last city council meeting. And so we've numbered them and we'll take them one at a time as they're on different topics. So the first budget action item, one is to fund the wastewater treatment plant office remodel with sewer GFC revenue. The budget action description is to propose to use sewer general facilities charges GFC revenue rather than REIT 1 or REIT 2 to pay for the wastewater treatment plant office remodel. Departments that use the wastewater treatment plant will be charged for the use of the building once a remodel is complete. Finance Director Mason has included the budget impact. And at this point, this is up for council review and decision.
Councilmember Supple?
Can someone refresh my memory why we want to find it this way? Using the GFC instead of the REIT?
It was a recommendation by a council member, not by staff. So that council member may want to speak to it. Councilmember Isaacson?
Yeah, nevermind, I'll, my question is, I'll answer.
And Councilmember Shaffer and then Councilmember Natalie?
Okay, well, my, my comment is kind of along, along the same lines as Councilmember Supple. And I think it's, you know, I have some, I guess, some clarifying questions for anyone that wants the answer. But my understanding is that the REIT revenue is more flexible, easier to spend than the GFC revenue. Is that a true statement? Maybe Director Mason, maybe you can help with that?
The REIT, the REIT revenue can be spent on more projects, that's for sure. The GFC revenue is, is specifically should be used for sewer related projects.
Okay, good, good, thank you. So that's one, one rationale for using GFC instead of REIT funds. And also, refresh my memory, what is the difference between REIT 1 and REIT 2?
There's not a lot of difference. And REIT 2 tends to be less, there's less things they can spend it on than REIT 1. Like you can't spend it on trails, I believe. There's just a few differences.
Okay, okay, good, now that's helpful, that's still, still helpful. And the third question I got is about the overhead of charging, you know, intra-departments rent for use of the, the building. I realize that's not uncommon practice. It's done, you know, it's done in governments, it's done in businesses. But nonetheless, that has me a little bit concerned about adding staff time for doing, you know, just doing the paperwork to keep track of, you know, to transfer rent money from one budget to, to another. Perhaps Director Mason, you can comment on that as well.
Sure, I, I think the big work will be done to, to figure out how much rent to charge. And then after that, it's just, it would just be a monthly or quarterly transfer from funds, one fund to another. So it, I don't think the work will be too difficult. After we figure out what the rent amounts would be.
Okay, good, good, yeah, that's helpful, that's helpful to, you know, to me. And I do like the idea of spending GFC funds where, where we can. I guess my, my maybe my, maybe my final question, I keep thinking of one more question. My final question is, if we spend GFC funds on this, does it deplete GFC funds that we could potentially spend elsewhere? Or does it actually give us the opportunity to potentially raise GFC, GFC charges to developers?
Director Lenacheski?
I'll jump in for Dana, good evening, Steve Lenacheski, hello, council, citizens and staff. GFC rates, Councilmember Shaffer, are set via the capital funding programming. Basically numerator and denominator, all the eligible expenses for work-related items for the sewer fund divided by how many ERUs we have remaining. So we can't just add things to the list without changing the list. So you don't directly control the outcome of the GFC amount. But, you know, we do go over the CIP list for sewer and other utilities on a fairly routine basis. So it gets like that, it doesn't, won't make it go up or down per se. And if funding is needed out of the GFC pool and GFC pools aren't inter, aren't available, which is a 408 fund, you then hold up utility funds on a main basis together. So operations 402, capital 408 for sewer, they are reported to the state as a waterworks fund. So they all are interchangeable in a sense. So the ending fund balances are comparable resources in 402 could cover your cost for capital. That's an eligible expense. So, yeah, I think the question is maybe is there enough GFC to finish up the products we have programmed as well as slide monies over to cover this cost? Is that fair?
Yes.
And that's a Dana handoff.
Director Mason?
So at this point in time, there is sufficient GFCs to pay for it. And, and also the rents that was received could go back into the sewer CIP fund for, for future projects.
Good, okay, good, good, thank you. That, that's all very helpful, appreciate it, thanks.
And Director Lenacheski and then Councilmember Natalie?
And then just one more tidbit for folks. We're not proposing to change the budget revenues forecasted in our budget. And I'm not sure even Councilor, Director Mason knows this. But due to some legislative changes on construction and new housing and some of the fire wise requirements as well as electrification and no more natural gas for home heating on new construction, we do expect a further increase in buildings to the middle, building permits middle between April and June, more so than we anticipated. So there may be a quicker rise in some of the GFC revenues related to new construction, which isn't anything but this information.
And Councilmember Natalie?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a tiny bit of history and I'll be brief. But this question was raised about using GFC to potentially partially fund the wastewater treatment plant remodel. And it was something that was brought up with the FAC committee and, or FAC, and we were going to discuss it. And I, nothing was ever documented out of that. And so when I saw this in the budget, I was like, oh, you know, we never resolved that conversation. And so that's when I brought it up again. And through that conversation, it was actually Director Lenacheski who commented that, well, actually that building is owned by the sewer. And so you could end up using GFC for the entirety of the project. And so I, I just want to clarify that it evolved from me saying, hey, could we at least partially pay for the remodel? Since sewer and water employees work in that building. And then it evolved into Director Lenacheski saying, well, actually, the entire building is owned by the sewer. And so, you know, perhaps use all GFC, I can't remember, maybe Director Lenacheski. So I just wanted to say it was a, a hybrid of a brainstorm that occurred that I kicked off way back in, I think, February of this year, and it evolved over time. So I just wanted to specify that it wasn't just my idea.
Councilmember Isaacson?
I remember, so I speak of mega, I think they can speak more specifically. But the way I think it was, the general conversation was it would use more restricted funds to do something, free of special sheet of funds. And maybe you said that this was recommended by a councilman, not staff. So my question is to the staff, council members don't know as good as staff does. Is there any unintended negative consequence that I think was a good idea? It seems like it's been discussed by the right people. Is this the right way to go based on your experience? That's to all staff.
So I'll leave that to Director Lenacheski and Director Mason. If you want to clarify for council as well, that most of the wastewater treatment people do not work in that building. They work in the actual sewer treatment plant building. Most of the staff that are within that building are, are general public works staff, including the director. So it's not at all, it is not all folks. So if that has any impact on you, you should be aware of that. My personal concern is with discussion of changing GFCs to fund things like that, even though the sewer treatment plant owns it, the appearance of using GFCs to fund partially general government. And so that's part of my concern. But Director Lenacheski and Director Mason can give their professional opinion on the technicalities of this. Director Mason?
Okay, I was waiting for Director Lenacheski to go first. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. It does free up REIT money for, for capital projects. The city didn't get the $2.5 million grant for Third Avenue. So, and, and of course, we're going to go out for another grant. But it does give us a little cushion in case we don't get exactly what we need. And charging the other departments rents will, will put some money back in there eventually over time. So it's, it's not a bad idea at all.
Director Lenacheski, did you have anything you want to add? So council, do you know what you want to do on this one? Mayor Pretend, I mean, I support making the change. It doesn't sound like, I mean, there's any huge concerns. I'm assuming if anything changes in the future, amendment would be brought forward in the mid buy. So, yeah, I'd be okay moving forward with it as stated in this action item.
Similarly, I, I've read the, you know, the, the history in the request log, was looking for specific feedback from either Director Mason or Director Lenacheski that sort of would counter indicate that it was the right decision. I didn't see that. I do while acknowledging sort of the mayor's concern, at the same time, having that little bit of additional flexibility and refunds for some of the other projects seems like it sort of balances the scales to move forward as it's currently got current.
And Councilmember Supple?
I don't see any issues with proceeding with this, approving this amendment.
So it looks like there's consensus, so this one will move forward. And we'll move on to the next one. City Administrator McNabb?
Budget, budget action item number two is the increased human services grant funding. And there was discussion at last week's council meeting to increase the human services grant funding from $20,000 per year to $40,000 per year. So budget action item number two documents that amendment and is ready for a decision by council.
Right, I'm simply going to ask if there are any objections since there was wide consensus on this at the last meeting? Seeing none, we have consensus and we can move on to budget action item number three.
So three, four and five are all kind of, they're similar in that they all deal with different scenarios for funding economic development. There was a discussion at the last council meeting on different scenarios for creating funds for economic development. I've created three scenarios based on what I heard from the last council meeting. And each of them should be voted separately. And if one fails and you would go to the next, if that one fails, you would go to the next. If all three fail, the next potential is to create a budget note to identify whether or not you want to come back in the mid buy to look again at economic development or create a budget note for something different with regard to economic development. So there are three scenarios here for voting. However, if they all fail and there's still interest in developing something for economic development, you could put it in a budget. So the first budget action item number three is economic development scenario number one. And that is what was discussed at the last city council meeting, which is to eliminate American Rescue Plan Act funding for Third Avenue Northeast improvements in the City Hall pre-design and scope project. It would add $490,000 in ARPA funding for economic development projects as a set aside using REIT 1 or Third Avenue improvement and using strategic funds for the City Hall pre-design and scope project as discussed by Councilmember Natalie, Councilmember Shaffer at the last meeting. So that is economic development scenario number one.
We could look at, would you like to look at all three?
Okay, economic development scenario number two is to eliminate. And I should also say as part of this conversation, I developed scenarios with a specific amount. Did with different monetary amounts, particularly the third one. So economic development scenario number two is to eliminate the American Rescue Plan Act funding for City Hall pre-design and scope. We would then use $150,000 in economic development projects with funding from ARPA and use the strategic funds to replace funding for the City Hall pre-design and scope project. And then economic development scenario number three is to use $100,000 from the strategic fund to fund economic development projects during the bidding.
Council discussion? I see Councilmember Shaffer has his hand up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And first of all, CM McNabb, thank you very much for giving us options here. This is exact, you know, we request this quite often. And this is a great example of where you listened to us and came back with the options for the council to consider. So much, much appreciated. If I can, I'd like to take a few minutes just to kind of reiterate why I think the economic development investment is so, so important. You know, first of all, this investment will give us measurable returns in incremental tax, sales tax and property tax. It will give us returns for some time in the future. So it really is an investment. And I, I want to talk quickly about the, oh, can I, can I share my screen? Is that, can I do that? I'm going to just share the same thing I did last last week. Share. Okay, can y'all see that?
No.
Yeah, yes. Okay, okay, maybe I can make it bigger. Is that bigger? No, okay. Okay, well. Just bottom right of the screen there. Yeah, there we go, there we go. Okay, is that bigger? Okay, okay, thanks. There, I, I wanted to talk briefly about the top five, five items and why I think they're important. I think, you know, the same reasons apply to why the chamber thinks this is what, and again, this is a chamber survey. This is the five items that they, we, you know, report. They came back as their top priorities. The pedestrian friendliness, you know, our current crosswalks downtown are frankly unsafe. I don't think any of us would disagree with that, especially at night or in inclement weather where visibility is compromised. Holding a little orange flag while you're crossing the street is, is less than a safe, you know, a busy highway street is less than a safe, safe thing to do. Our 30 mile an hour speed limit through downtown is frankly too fast. We need to get that reduced to 25 mile an hour. And along the lines of pedestrian friendliness, outdoor dining is somewhat limited there. It's a bit of a hodgepodge depending on what business happens to have tables out. And, and really little of any consistency at that point. Events, the, the events, this is the second item, additional or expanded events is basically, I don't, everybody I've talked to personally downtown has mentioned this as their top of mind item. It brings in obviously local and out of town customers, increases awareness to Duval's amenities or attractions. And obviously this, we'd have to partner with the chamber and other businesses in Duval to make this happen. And probably take examples of what other towns nearby have done as well that have been, been successful. Main steep flower baskets, I know we've talked about this before. But it actually got, you know, a fairly positive response on this survey. You know, this is one of the easier items for us to pull up. Basically, we contract with professional services. They come in, they drop down the, the baskets and containers and take care of them. Now, obviously, this is not a one-time expense. It's a year-over-year expense. But still, from ease of actually accomplishing this, it's not a terribly difficult thing to do. Obviously, this increases the traction of our downtown area for not only pedestrians, but drive-by traffic sees these as well. And it's a great marketing tool for Duval. Improved signage, we, we have signs downtown, don't get me wrong. The, the, but I would like some type of signage that would create awareness of Duval's businesses and attractions and also point the way to easier parking for those that are not familiar with where you can park in Duval and where, you know, where, where you can. Duval has quite a bit of parking, we know that since we live here, but other people, other people don't. Marketing, we could use a professional marketing company to get, you know, get a proper appearance on the web, something that highlights our, our teaching businesses. Our gourmet and ethnic restaurants, craft beer, wine, spirits, jewelry making, shopping opportunities, things that really make Duval unique and original. I don't know if any of you know this, our local jeweler here is actually known throughout the nation. He's in high demand for his custom, custom jewelry. And many of us here in town aren't even aware of that. So the, the 500,000 that we talked about or 490,000 may seem like a lot. But frankly, I don't think 100,000 or 150,000 is going to be enough. I mean, that's, you know, on a, from a biannual point of view, that's only 50 or $75,000 a year. There's only so much we can, we can do with this. And again, you know, I, I really want to make investments that have returns in the form of, you know, of profits, tax profits for the city. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend, you can read it.
Yeah, so I took some time this weekend to really think about this one. I'm not sure I'm on board with any of the scenarios specifically. So a few key things, and then I'll let everyone else talk about it. So I think that, you know, I've, for some of them, I think what I hope, at least that I'm seeing is we're talking about shut funds. Because I don't want to lose the funding for the city hall planning or any of the other things that were talked about. So we pulled that from ARPA, I want to make sure that's coming from somewhere else, like strategic fund, to be clear. I think that, sorry, it's just a lot to keep shuffling back over so I don't lose my thought here. I, so traditionally, when we wanted to earmark money, and I think it is really important, Councilmember Shaffer, like you pointed out, to say this money is for economic development because it shows a commitment. But we're bringing on a lot of new positions that are interwoven with economic development. And I'm really curious to see how, like what they come up with, what needs they see specifically. And we don't know until we hire them and they get working. And so what I'm wondering is typically when we earmark money or as like a space saver for what we want to focus on, maybe we use like $50,000. We would add more in the future or in a mid biennial adjustment. But it would be after time has passed and those positions have had time to get going and see like real tangible needs. And I know as you've pointed out before too, that the chamber is one subset of businesses. We have a lot of others. And so while this survey is great and a really good first start, obviously we need to survey more and talk to other businesses as well. So, you know, I'm also wondering about the amount of time that passes before we advertise for these positions and then hire them. So there will be some natural savings there. And I don't know if that's a way we could mark money or save money and put a budget note saying that any cost savings or not, maybe not any, but just have an amount, like if we accumulate a certain amount of cost savings between the time we start recruiting and actually hire, hire the positions, maybe that could be some seed money for some of these positions to use for economic development. But in general, like I, while I am open to spending more money in the future and in the near future when it's identified through a slightly longer process. A slightly longer process, I get a little nervous about marking down too much. In my mind, five hundred thousand is very significant. And I get it's really important, but I also look at how. We increased our human services grant funding from twenty thousand a year to forty thousand. And now for economic development, we're looking at this way bigger number. I know it's not all the same, but those are just some of the thoughts in my head and I want to throw those out, but I'm, I'm looking more at, let's make space for it. Whether it's from strategic fund. That might be the simplest, a smaller number just to make sure it's in there knowing, maybe without a budget note that we're going to increase it. But we want to identify specific projects through a process that involves the community at large. And as well as other businesses not chamber related.
I'm Councilmember Isaacson, and then Natalie and Supple.
Yeah, for a lot of reasons you mentioned, Mayor Protem is vying towards three. Because ARPA has a timeline, everything. A lot and get moving out the door, getting done, and the city already has a process of spending money. We don't have to approve it. We don't have to. Figure out which thing is more important and go out and get more surveys, whereas. Option three is more like what for a year now, so that we've been talking about trying to do, and that is. Get the city and get the budget to commit to taking free up some funds, in this case strategic funds. Put it aside. And so that's going to be for economic development, free up the timeline restrictions and the agreements and all the opinions. On where, look, our money that's burning, it's been almost a year now, we haven't allocated. We need to get the money on contract allocated, so it doesn't possibly pull back. Is a hundred thousand, no, is five hundred too much? I don't know. I, I would say that if whatever number we put on option three, this is my discussion. We can at the biennium change that. We can increase, we can decrease. We can see what have we actually been able to accomplish as a city and a council to finally agree to spend this money, we haven't done in a year. So I don't care if it's five or not, halfway through the year, we can say, well, we still have nothing, and this could have happened. This has been two fifty, half a year, we didn't, now we're back to the beginning. That gives to me, unless I'm wrong in understanding budgets and the colors of money in the city. That gives us the most flexibility and still accomplishes. As Marsha, I think you're trying to accomplish, and I agree with everything you're trying to do, just I think we will get way more flexibility. In accomplishing that, using strategic funds and decompressing the timeline we have got to spend it. Before we lose it. Maybe, maybe, we still will be maybe, but it just isn't the best chance. The number, the hundred thousand number, you said that we can change that today. And we can all, I think, comes under agreement where that should be. And I'm open to any number, to be honest with you. It gives us flexibility.
Thank you, Councilmember Isaacson. Councilmember Natalie.
Yeah, this is a question for Director Mason and something Mayor Protem brought up, just clicked it in my brain. So. Mayor Protem mentioned, oh, well, if we don't fill the positions right away, that could free up some money because we'd have some savings because. You know, we made a budget of them for the full two years, but we ended up, you know, not. Hiring them until partway through, so there's some savings. But here's something that just occurred to me. Our ARPA money is set to zero at the end of the budget period. So a lot of these positions are two-year LTEs. And even what's budgeted on most cases isn't a full two years. So the, are we really only hiring them for twenty-two months? Or are we hiring them for twenty-four? And if we're hiring these positions for twenty-four months. Who pays for the two months in two thousand twenty-five? Because we're out of ARPA money.
Can you answer that question?
Sure.
So the ARPA legislation requires that the money be committed in twenty twenty-three and then begin in twenty twenty-four. If it is fully committed and a person is hired in that position, it actually doesn't have to be fully spent until twenty twenty-six.
I totally get what you're saying, but I guess my concern is. A lot of these positions are only budgeted for twenty-one, twenty-two months. And yet we would hire them for two years. So we are spending all of the ARPA money based on not a full two years. And I understand that if it extends into two thousand twenty-five. Yes, we could, it will have been committed and we could spend it, but my issue is we haven't accounted for. Where we're going to get the money in that extended period. So another example is the three-year planning manager. That's a three-year position, yet we're using up a hundred percent of our ARPA money within this biennium. With no money reserved to pay for the final third year. So I feel a little nervous because now I'm thinking we're committed, committing to expenditures that we haven't even identified. A funding source for that piece that extends beyond. And that's even if we go based on the timeline that is budgeted for. Because we, if you look at the positions, when you look at what's budgeted for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. You can see that there is an expectation that we won't start the positions until a few months into the year potentially. So there will definitely be, if it's a two-year position, an amount that extends beyond once the ARPA money has been spent. Director Mason, it's a question for Director Mason. What funding do we have identified to pay for that amount that extends? Into two thousand twenty-five, assuming we hire on schedule and use up all the ARPA money in the budget. And the, like I said, the planning manager is a three-year commission.
Right. I mean, the city is going to have to find additional revenue sources. So I, we, we've talked about this a little bit, but we, you're, you're right, there is. Once the money from ARP is gone, the money is from ARP is gone and, and, and the positions are. Budgeted for twenty, you know, to start in March or to start in April, just depending on what position it is. It's, it's all in, in the budget. So they, they are only funded with ARPA money right now. Chances are, we're not going to be able to find someone and hire them immediately. So I mean. That's usually what happens, so we can extend it out a little bit longer. But, yeah, we, we would be using probably fund balance or. Hopefully, we can find another source of revenue for these positions.
Director Mason, but that would be using fundamentals would be if we went beyond contracting for twenty-four months, correct? Please let Director Mason respond.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't understand your question.
And so, as I understand it, these positions are budgeted for two full years, twenty-four months with ARP funds.
So they, yeah, in, in, in this budget, they are budgeted for when we are, are going to hire them. Until the end of the biennium. So they're just budgeted for the biennium.
So there is nothing to stop us from shortening those positions at the end of the biennium, correct? If we don't find long-term funding sources, is that correct?
That is true, yeah.
Councilmember Natalie, we've already spoken, please let Councilmember Supple and then Councilmember.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I. I kind of agree in a large part with Mayor Protem on her statements regarding. Any of these three budget action items, especially the first one with the net fund balance of minus a hundred and fifty dollars. A hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm, I'm a little leery of this shell game we're playing of transferring this fund to pay for this and then transferring money out of here. To pay for that. It doesn't, this doesn't sit well with me when we start doing things like that. Also, I, I would really don't want to see any, any impact to funding the City Hall pre-design. Or Third Avenue Northeast Street improvements. I think those probably take priority over economic development. In my mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Mars, we haven't heard from you yet.
Yeah, so I'm. Actually, some time looking at this as well. And I think, you know, initially, and I missed, I think some of this was discussed in the, in the Cal. Prior to meeting, but the. I, I think where I'm wary is the amount of funding in the absence of a plan. I think the, the other part which. We discussed as, as part of the, the job descriptions in terms of roles and responsibilities that bill of rules that are, are still evolving in some cases. And, and I think there is a certain, well, not even certain, there's a large level of overlap. We even discussed that in terms of. Whether to combine certain positions simply because they were targeting economic development. And I think the other piece that I'm. You know, and it's always sort of a, a double-edged sword to some extent is. You know, we're still sort of trying to figure out where the inflection point is on the, on the recession. There is opportunities to invest funds during sort of a downturn to, to sort of maintain business, but at the same time, we're not getting the same ROI. Because we're not seeing the level of investment and interest in the community. I'd much rather. Invest that sort of when we're coming on the upside or the upswing where folks are looking to reengage. We're still sort of, there's some COVID hangover. Which is impacting business. I think having the. The, these positions hired and sort of in, 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 in taking in that input, whether it is, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred thousand. That's sort of where I would look. I think the other piece that has come up multiple times in these discussions is. The budget is a living thing. We're not locked in. We have both have the biennium, the mid-biennium adjustment, but even. You know, outside of that window, once we start getting feedback, we have tools that we can start to influence that conversation. So. My sort of directional guidance and, and, and all that said, I, I do want to highlight that. Economic development is very important. But we're, we're. In the absence of a discrete plan at this point, my, my preference would be to go with a placeholder amount and then take the input from these. These new hires and essentially capitalize on those opportunities that are going to have the, the most impact rather than sort of looking at a grab bag of things we might do. And allocating a lot of ones.
Thank you. And so we've gone through around once and we've had these discussions multiple times now at this point, except on the specific amendments. So I'd like to ask council if you have any specific items on either one of the three economic development budget notes before we take a vote. Mayor Protem.
I'll say what mine is. I was a little concerned that I distracted with the topic of savings. And I don't think Councilmember Natalie actually weighed in on what she thought of these because of that topic. But just really quick, I would say that I am most in favor of, I scrolled past it, the third option. But Director Mason, can you bring it up on the screen again, please? But scenario three. No, yes. Yeah, but with a smaller amount, like fifty thousand dollars, but with a budget note stating. That we would reevaluate that as needed, or maybe, I don't know what, I don't want to wordsmith that, but just with the intention of. We want to mark money, we'll look at adding more, but we don't know how much that would be. And I don't know if. Our city administrator has input on like fifty thousand seems like, I mean, it's kind of a guessing game. You don't know like what amount you really would need to do certain things. Like Councilmember Shaffer was talking about a consultant or anything. So sorry, I'm getting off track a little bit again, but I guess just to keep it simple. I lean towards scenario three, but with a smaller amount and a budget note describing that we would come back with a plan. And then increase as needed or have the council discussion around it at that time.
All right, so should we, Councilmember Isaacson? I think, well, if there's any, I think what we need is if there's any changes to the, any of the three amendments, and it sounds like we have a proposal for one change. Potentially. So I'd like council to speak to these specific budget amendments. If you don't have anything to speak to, then I would like to take those. Councilmember Isaacson.
So I think it's fair, I would lean towards three as well, and I'm actually leaning towards the amount of this more. Unless for the question. Can we increase it soon?
Yes, anytime.
And, and we're not, that strategic fund always be full from add to it.
Correct. So long as there's money in the bank, correct?
And we don't have a mark for anything right now, this budget. This is why we're.
Correct.
Councilmember Natalie.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that. Council had wanted to have a conversation about trying to nail down some specific. Projects or expenditures options for the ARPA money because we felt like it was. A very specific response to the impacts of COVID and, and what the purpose of ARPA funds were is to respond to the pandemic. And create resiliency in our economy. And so it was a, a really important. Part of our planning for ARPA spending. And we just didn't have the staff time to devote to identifying those things. And so it makes me a little bit sad that here we are, you know.
Please speak to the economic budget amendments, please.
I am. I'm talking about that I think it's important to use ARPA money on economic development projects. And setting money aside, because we haven't planned specifically how we are going to spend the money. I, I, I hear what's being said, but it's, it's not because of lack of intent. It's because we have not had staff time. And so I think in conjunction with. Hiring these positions, we really need to set aside some money to do, make some big moves. And, you know, at first I felt, you know, maybe fifty, a hundred thousand dollars made sense. But Councilmember Shaffer said, we need to think big. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for City of Duval to make a difference. To increase our, you know, reach in our businesses and. You know, you've got to think big sometimes and setting aside a, a, a substantial amount of money where you can do something big. It's, it's like I said, it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So when I, when I first. You know, thought about this, I, I thought fifty to a hundred was sufficient. But honestly, when we were discussing this as a council, my recollection, when we were discussing our priorities for ARPA. We were hoping to do something big and really give back and. Anyway, I don't know, I just wanted to give that history that we wanted to come up with more specific ideas. But there just wasn't staff time and we finally have staff time. With these new positions and it's going to be disappointed, disappointing that there's such a small budget available to do something with. So. That's where I'm coming from. I respect what everyone else on council decides, but I just wanted to give you the history of why we don't have more specific ideas yet. Not because no one cared or it wasn't something we wanted to do and we've just not focused on it. It's that literally there wasn't. Just wasn't the effort put into it because of not having staff time. So. I'd prefer a larger dollar amount. Now, of course, if. I do have something new to add. I want to say that just because you set money aside, if we don't, if we determine that there isn't a project that would be eligible or that we thought was a wise investment. There's plenty of projects that we could use ARPA money on, so it wouldn't be wasted. But if we don't set the money aside, it's not going to happen.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Natalie. Let's take a vote on budget amendment number one, or, sorry. I think it's technically three.
I just ask a process question here. Are, are we, is, are we all going to vote on each of the three items? Plus, there was another, another suggestion to carve out at least fifty thousand. So that's.
There's the two suggestions and then there's a hundred and fifty, so that, that third one could be amended by council. So I'll ask all those in favor of budget amendment one, please say, or for the, I'm sorry, budget amendment three. Please say aye. Yeah, and so council member, just to be clear, this is the one that takes four hundred ninety thousand in ARPA money and puts it to economic development. Scenario number.
Okay, thank you for the break.
Yeah, so.
Three, scenario one, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no.
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 Motion fails. Moving on to budget action item number three, economic development scenario number two. And this one. So this one eliminates American Rescue Plan Act funding for City Hall pre-design and scope. Funds a hundred and fifty economic development projects of funding from ARPA and uses strategic funds to replace funding for the City Hall pre-design and scope project. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion fails. Moving on to budget action number five.
If it's approved, we can amend that.
No, amend, but you need to amend that. So budget action number five, economic development scenario number three.
From, what is it now, a hundred thousand? Customer Shaver, two hundred and fifty dollars as a middle ground of making a large investment and. Concerned with you. That's my.
So you're moving to amend it to fifty thousand versus?
Half of what. And then we can vote and change that as we are in the rest of the year.
Director Langston, as the budget stands, do we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars available in the strategic fund that's not pre-programmed in the budget?
Yes, with, if if revenues and expenditures are as as budgeted, we will have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Alright, is there a second? Councilmember Isaacson's amended.
Second, Schaefer.
Right, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Aye. We have three ayes. All those opposed, please say no. Councilmember Nauplin, what is your vote on this amendment?
I don't even know at this point.
Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Councilmember Nauplin, what I'm trying to do is. Get funding obligated in this budget that is a large value, I think, that I think would have an impact. Is what we originally talked about beginning of the year is get the budget to commit to. Economic development, but free up ARPA because of the timeline restrictions. So I'm proposing we do what House Member Schaefer is trying to do, or just put in strategic funds and half the value because of that's very well. There's so few concerns about the amount of money. So I'm saying two hundred and fifty thousand strategic funds committed to economic development. With option three instead of only a hundred thousand dollars.
And then Mayor Porton?
Yeah, I was just going to sort of. Comment on that. I'm not averse to the two hundred and fifty thousand. I think I would have just preferred to do a lower number than had budget and said up until two hundred and fifty thousand. But, you know, again, that's sort of was my. My thinking, again, when we have more clarity, because there's nothing to say that, again, we can't. Increase it. I know there are other things you can discuss tonight that involve strategic funds and and you're sort of making that. Commitment as a strategic fund at this point, so just something to to keep it, keep it modern.
Great, thank you. Mayor Porton?
Promise this is on topic, so stay with me. It'll be quick, but I I just wanted to say that. I a hundred percent think that this is a good use of ARPA, but my thinking is I want to get it spent. And not worry about a deadline. And so I, same as Councilmember Mercer, I lean more toward going a smaller amount and then amending higher. But honestly, it's the same argument. It's a year, so I would support going to that number.
Great, so we do have three, two, three in favor of the two hundred and fifty thousand, two against, and one extension. I'll ask Mr. Kenny if that passes, if if that counts as a pass or if we have to have a third vote to make it four. Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Isaacson.
So I'm just, I'm just asking for clarity for Councilmember Nauplin, since I spoke with her, she says she didn't understand where we are. Sorry, I thought maybe she was saying that thing, because I don't understand where we are. Maybe she could say no, this is what I really.
I haven't voted on this. I I don't recall voting on this. I didn't understand, and so I, I. Decided not to vote because I didn't think it was.
Ask you if you were voting for or against or if you were abstaining and you said you abstained. Mr. Kenny, can you please, hopefully you're paying attention. Can you please step in?
I I would, yes. Well, so, I mean, a three, two, one vote does not pass. You can, I I don't know if Councilmember Nauplin wishes to have a different vote. You could, somebody can make the same motion and and see where it goes.
Right. So and they would have, City Attorney Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, it would have to be on. The prevailing side that makes the new proposed motion, correct?
Well, so, hey, we're we're kind of in a little bit of a gray area here. You're referring to reconsideration and yes. For reconsideration, it would have to be somebody that was on the prevailing side to do a reconsideration. Because we're just doing kind of procedural motions, and this is not a full motion to approve. The budget, if you will. I think somebody could just make another motion. It's a little unusual, but yeah.
Request reconsider after the discussion of the amendment to. Change option three to two hundred and fifty thousand in strategic.
Right, is there a second to reconsider?
Second, Schaefer.
So, so it's the amendment that was just voted, that did not pass because of the three, two, one. To have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from strategic fund go to economic development.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. That the expenditure of this money would still always come back to council to determine the individual, since it's not. Exactly identified how to be spent, it's just being a set aside. I just want to clarify that, that. This is a set aside that would still require council approval to move ahead. Once we identify the items.
City Administrator McNabb?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So if the money is released and set aside to be given to. City administrative staff to. Create some process, you know, for entitlement, is the. Assumption that council is going to approve each and every one of those projects? I would, I mean, in my mind, I would think that some kind of plan would be developed. That's kind of what's been missing, I think, for a lot of people is. Do we want to greenlight money when we don't really have a plan in place? So not necessarily piece by piece, but. I do think there's a desire because it sort of replaces what, you know, some of the other council members wanted to do for ARPA. Because we're running out of time, we want to spend it. So I, I mean, maybe we can talk about that down the line. What does that process look like? But I, you know, if it's like, oh, we want to spend twenty dollars or, you know what I mean? Like, I don't think we want every single. But to understand the plan with some kind of numbers. Okay, I I just want to make sure that I understand and that I asked a question on the minutes. What is the intent? So when they say council will be approving the expenditure of these funds, I want to have. Some understanding of what approval looks like in that context.
Yeah, I'm from one of the world. I'm from, I'm not. Familiar with. Here, here, take the money, come back in six months with a plan on how you're going to spend. I want, I want a plan upfront first. And then let me review the plan, and then I'll determine whether you're going to have the money to spend on it or not. I I, if you don't have a plan, you plan to fail, you know, that's just. The way it works.
Thank you. So we have.
I have my hand raised.
Hold on, please. We have a motion and a second on bringing this back. Is there any further discussion on bringing this back? And then Councilmember Nauplin?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I consider that this, since there is not an identified project, I consider this similar to when we do set aside money for grants. To human resources or things like that, that once a plan comes forward. There's a committee, there'll need to be work done that involves, has community involvement. Before this money just starts administratively being spent. I consider it to be. Very similar, like I said, to the grant program where you set aside a certain amount, proposals come forward. And council approves them. I think that it's a pretty typical process when you don't have expenditures identified. And that would be my request. I am not in favor unless we have a system like that or an agreement that that's how we will operate. And I think. Councilmember, I believe it was Supple, he. He very clearly described why it's important to have a plan, and I agree with him.
Great, so we'll go ahead and take the vote again. All those in favor of the re-proposed amendment, please say aye. All opposed, please say no.
No.
Councilmember Mercer and Nauplin, I did not hear any verbal mic review?
I did say yes. I guess the one area, I should have brought this up, the discussion, is there a note that would then do new? A budget note, or is that something that would have been put in place before you?
You can always add a budget note, but the fact of the matter is that mayoral administrative spending is already so low. That outside of her normal activities of communications, et cetera. We would likely not be able to do anything with this money without community council approval.
That was what I had a comment, so yes, my my vote was yes on reconsideration.
Right, so reconsidering, so. The motion is to approve this amendment as proposed by. Councilmember Isaacson in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from strategic funds. I'm sorry. I I'm going to ask for Councilmember Nauplin, because I did not hear her verbal. Councilmember Nauplin, are you a yay or an extension?
I guess I. I want to say yes, but under the understanding that a plan would be formed and brought before council. And I I don't know the order. It feels a little bit bizarre to say yes without having. An understanding that that is a process that would be followed, so. I, that is what's holding me up because I I brought up the issue and there was no response. We went directly to a vote. And so I I'm trying to understand if there is a process that I need. To make a amendment to the motion on the table to say, under these circumstances, I'm not sure, I.
City, City Administrator McNabb?
Yes, very similar to the discussion, reading the job descriptions back to council, I think it is absolutely appropriate. That once a plan is developed, to bring the plan back to council and have council approve it. My only. Concern was how regular council approval would need to be, but certainly once a plan is developed. And adopted by council, you know, well, let me back to it. A plan should be developed, it should be adopted by council and then implemented by city administration. That could absolutely commit to doing that.
Thank you. That really helps me if that is a commitment that administration is making. I will vote yes.
Alright, motion passes. And then we have.
So the final budget action item tonight is budget action item number six, apartment open space manager. And I want to remind everyone that manager is a placeholder. We have not classified this position fully yet. So the budget action item is at a parks and open space manager position funded with money through the strategic fund. This position is already reflected in the budget as presented last week. And will be removed if there is not council support. Alternatively, if it's voted yes, the budget will remain. As amended last week and presented to council.
Councilmember Isaacson?
So if this is approved, Director Mason, we just approved an amendment to the previous discussion, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That we, if this is approved, we're still able to fund this position as well.
You hear the question?
What was the question? I'm sorry, I.
We just approved a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar earmark of strategic funds to, in place of the ARPA funds for economic development. Given that that is marked, this is coming up afterwards, can we still fund this position with the two hundred and fifty thousand set aside from strategic funds? Or economic development?
And so this fund is, this is also funded with strategic funds and it's already in the the current budget, so we would. We, if if council did not want to approve this budget or this this. Budget action item, then the money would go back to, we would remove it from the the transfers, so we'd go back to the strategic fund.
I'll ask it again. So we already have this mark in strategic funds, but we just added two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the previous amendment. Do we still have the funds to pay?
Yes, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
I have a follow up question, Director Mason. After these two collections are appropriated, well, we have one approved and one up for approval. What would the balance and projected strategic fund balance be?
Standby, let's see, it would be. It would be about three hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year, at the end of the biennium, just under three hundred thousand.
Thank you. We've had lots of discussion on this one. Is there any, are there any changes to this amendment as proposed? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion fails for lack of a majority. Alright, moving on to exhibit B.
Was there a, sorry, I can't, I can't completely see what's going on. There was. Was there some abstaining votes or?
Number Schaefer, Councilmember Levitt is not here, so it was three, three, so that means the motion.
Oh, it's three, three. Okay, thank you. I.
And the mayor cannot vote on budget items.
Sure, sure, thanks.
Alright, last budget item before approval of the budget, budget, that's it, okay, oh, I've got. Alright, then with that.
Oh, yes, sorry, there is one more item. So prior to adopting the budget, thank you, and this is why I wrote it down and then didn't look. We have one more additional item for discussion. It's a small item that hopefully will. Go quickly and I'm going to turn it over to Director.
Thank you. Sorry for the late interjection, City Co-Works Director Stela Shesky. So we were preparing and reviewing some of the items in the budget for purchase, and one is a boom lift. That is budgeted three, thirty seven thousand five hundred. As our co-works manager have been looking at some of that preliminarily today. A question arose, and I want to bring it to your attention because I thought there might be some interest. So we have thirty seven thousand five hundred budgeted for a forty five foot boom lift. Costs are a little higher if we choose to go electric. So we weren't choosing to go electric. We think we want to bring it to your attention to go to electric. So with tax on the same unit, but electric, it would be just under forty five thousand. So that'll be a change to the three funds that are proposed to fund this, which is streets, parks, and the water department. They're each in currently for the twelve thousand five hundred or a third share. So that would need to bump their amounts up just a little bit to get it to be an electrified. Lift instead of diesel. So, although it's important, I know I kind of, I've heard a few comments, so I want to make sure it brought to your attention. And just move it forward if possible. If not, you know, we'll move on. We're still having a great tool, but. Electric would be a better opportunity, and it just came to fruition today.
Councilmember Supple and then Schaefer and then Isaacson?
So what was the delta?
So the total for each of the three funds is twelve thousand five hundred for thirty seven thousand five hundred total. We need, I'm just going to go to forty five thousand for the math. That is a delta of. That five, seven thousand five hundred or another twenty five hundred from each of those three funds. So then we go from twelve thousand five hundred to fifteen thousand per, that's you do. And and diesel is about cheap, yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Okay, thanks. First of all, I like the idea of, you know, setting some examples and starting for the city, starting to go with some electric. Electric vehicles. I know there's a lot of discussion on this, the pros and cons, and and, yeah, electric, you got to plug it in and that electricity has to come from. From somewhere, but electric vehicles are more efficient. They convert more of the energy into into real work, and that's one of the big, you know, big plus items with any electric vehicle. My. My my general belief, and I want to run this by Director Lon Shesky, but but my general belief is that electric vehicles are also more reliable. And require less maintenance, and therefore the total cost of ownership. Can actually be less. And Director, do you have any thoughts on that from your experience or research?
Yeah, so the the great news about this, and which is why I think a lot of our staff like working here, because they're included in these decisions and these thoughts where. We have a maintenance worker too, he actually previously to his. we have a, a maintenance worker too, he actually previously to his, uh, almost third year here, came from genie. Not that we're speculating a certain type of lift. So he actually brought it to Joe's attention whenever he was just talking about it on break. And exactly that, you're, you're right on, like, typically, maintenance is less, breakdown is less, um, mess is less. So, yeah, it is a, a, a great idea brought up, again, just by a, a regular maintenance worker at the city, which we, we are always up for anybody bringing anything forward that makes sense. So, um, yeah, all your points were correct.
Great, thank you.
Um, Mayor Portman, can I? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Isaacson?
Uh, Director Lyszewski, you answered some of my questions. Those are lots of pros. I, so the staff has recommended this one as opposed to the diesel operated and from there, was there any concerns of, I mean, the, one of the negatives of electricity, when it's gone, it's gone, you're dead. And so a project has to stop until this item can be recharged. Or the diesel, you can go to the gas station, get a tank of gas and finish the project. Yes or no of that discussion, where they, with the projects they're gonna use, they're not concerned about that?
Yeah, typically, if we're working on something like that, it's in a mobile business state. So you go in, you use it, you go and recharge it, start again the next day. It's just a, it's a mobile lift, so it's not critical. Uh, I didn't get the full charge, but it certainly pays for the work.
Uh, Mayor Portman, what a pleasant surprise. I love to totally support it.
And I'm very sorry, Joe was like, well, I won't, I'm like, no, it'll be fine. Like, I think it's no big deal. I think everybody wants to, again, continue to electrify and, you know, we're putting, uh, I think at least three stalls in at the remodel, because one general one is great, but once you do one generally, you have to do an ADA. So the general one will be a two-pole split and then the other one will be serving the ADA stall. So, yes, it's coming.
Um, so Councilor, are there any objections to Director Lyszewski's change? Seeing none. Um, now we can vote on the budgets. Uh, so, uh, I would ask Council for a motion to approve, uh, the budget as amended.
Councilor Raison, motion. Going through the, uh, there's an Exhibit B.
It's already approved.
Oh, okay, that's why it's Exhibit B.
Councilor Raison, most approves the budget as.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passes and we have an approved budget. We'll move on to our one item of new business is Agenda Bill twenty-two dash one-one-five, SVGH twenty-two-three Legislative Agenda Priorities. Uh, these are pretty standard and in line with what, um, what we've discussed about our, our council agenda. Uh, no one was able to make this Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association due to previous commitments uh, when they had this discussion, which is why this is coming to council for approval. Uh, so I hope you've all read it and I hope that we can just get a motion and approve and I'll sign it tomorrow.
Interim clerk, um, can we pull up the attachment, please?
Are we waiting to display the, uh?
If you're ready to make a motion, you can make a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. I, I, I moved to approve Agenda Bill. Sorry, I don't have it up. Twenty-two dash one-one-five, uh, twenty-twenty-three Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association Legislative Agenda.
Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, I do just want to make up my own and thank council for all their hard work, um, on this budget. Uh, I think we are making more forward progress in this budget than we have in the last five years uh, in making sure that we're making investments in sustaining our future and, uh, bolstering our workforce and providing the level of service that our community, uh, deserves. So thank you all for all the hard work and the great conversation. And with that, if there are no objections, we are adjourned.
Bye, everyone.
Um, I guess we don't have to put that on the record. Well, we probably do. We, we can cancel the meeting.
We don't.
We have a time for, we'll cancel it on the link tomorrow.
And you can all think, Mayor.